Good evening. My name is Anne Domski, President of the Board of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. Welcome to tonight's candidate debate sponsored by the League and the Political Science Department of the University of Scranton. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, which means that we do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. Our mission is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation by citizens in their government. We are a grassroots, member-driven, all-volunteer organization. We encourage everyone to join the League of Women Voters. Membership is open to both men and women. Please see the back of your program for further information, or you may go to our website at l w v lackawanna dot org. Please support our work by making a donation on your way out this evening. Donations help us to cover costs, including video recording, so that these events can be viewed by a wider audience. Volunteers will be at the back of the room and will be happy to accept your donation. ECTV is recording tonight's debate. This is not a live broadcast. The recorded event will be aired on Comcast 19, local television, so please check the ECTV schedule. The recorded debate will also be available by tomorrow on YouTube via leaks from our website. Please see your program for further information. The League has conducted recorded interviews of candidates for Lackawanna County Controller and Scranton School Board. These and recordings of previous debates for Scranton Mayor and City Council candidates may also be viewed on ECTV and YouTube. Before voting, you may want to study a sample ballot. Sample ballots can be found at the Lackawanna County Elections website prior to the election. The general election will be on Tuesday, November 5th. In a general election, all voters, including independents and members of any political party, may vote for the candidates of their choice irrespective of party. Be aware that the deadline for registering to vote in this election has already passed. If you are not registered to vote, please be sure to do so at the Lackawanna County Department of Elections or the Pennsylvania State Voter Registration website prior to the May 2020 primary. Before we begin, please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from a League of Women Voters Lackawanna County event for campaign purposes. Any use of the media requires the express written approval of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. No excerpts or soundbites may be taken from tonight's event. Please turn off or silence all your phones and other devices. Tonight's event is among candidates for the Lackawanna County Commissioner, and our moderator will be Andrea Mulrain. Ms. Mulrain is currently on the Board of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and a past president. Andrea?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here with us tonight for this important debate for Lackawanna County Commissioner. A couple of housekeeping details. Again, as Anne said, please silence your mobile devices. We ask that the audience hold applause and comments until the end, so once your candidate has given their closing statement, feel free to applaud. This will be approximately a 90-minute debate, and I will tell you with four candidates and giving each one of them equal time to respond, there's not a lot of time for interruptions, so we ask that you do abide by that request, that you not interrupt with applause. Candidates are seated alphabetically on the stage, and all candidates will answer the same set of questions, and no questions were given in advance. The questions, most of them have a two-minute response limit, so we ask the candidates to finish their thought at the end of that timeframe. And each candidate will be allowed up to two rebuttals of one minute each. They can use the full two-minute allotment at one time if desired, or use them separately as they see fit. As we said, this is for the Lackawanna County Commissioners race. The way that Lackawanna County Government is structured is that we, the voters, will vote on two of these candidates on November 5th, but three of them will be elected. So we'll have two majority commissioners and a minority commissioner, so we, the voters, will vote two and three will be elected. They generally run as a party. They run together as candidates within their party, but we, the voters, can choose to vote however we desire to. And so they're seated alphabetically on the stage, but I will let you know that Chris Chirmack and Michael Gianetta are the Republican candidates running together, and Debbie Dominic and Jerry Notariani are the Democratic candidates, and they're running together on the Democratic ticket. And I will apologize to Mr. Notariani because we apparently misspelled your last name. It's got two Ns at the end. So with that, I will introduce the candidates this evening and a brief bio, and I will let the candidates know if I leave something out of your bio that you feel is important, please feel free to include that in one of your responses. The first candidate is Chris Chirmack. Again, he is running on the Republican ticket. He's a resident of Dalton, was born in Clark Summit, and he and his wife Casey are the parents of Christina, Colin, Michael, and Emily, and have one grandson, Aiden. He is a graduate of Abington Heights High School, a technician with Chirmack Services. He held the position of General Manager, Joseph Chirmack Incorporated Suzuki Saab. And this is Mr. Chirmack's first time running for public office. His civic experience includes current membership in the Clark Summit Fire Company and BLS and CPR instructor for the American Heart Association. He's a National Ski Patrol member for Elk Mountain, an EMS volunteer for Steamtown Marathon and first responder, as well as security at St. Benedict's Country Bazaar, and he has also served on the Clark Summit Planning Commission. Welcome tonight, Chris Chirmack. Debbie Dominic was born in Scranton, resides in Dunmore with her son Dylan. She's a graduate of Dunmore High School. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of Scranton, Go Royals, and her law degree from Dickinson School of Law. She's a member of Lackawanna County Bar Association and Teamsters Local 229, and this is her first time as a candidate for public office. She's currently proprietor of Dominic Law and practices law as a member of the Lackawanna County Public Defender's Office. She was a civil litigator prior to this with the O'Donnell Law Firm for several years and Margolis Edelstein as well. From 2000 to 2001, she held a clerkship for the Honorable Thomas L. Vanaski in the U.S. District Court. Welcome, Debbie Dominic. Mike Gianetta is an alumnus of Scranton Prep in the University of Scranton, again, Go Royals, where he earned his degree, his bachelor's in political science and history, and a master's in history. He received his doctorate from Temple School of Law in Philadelphia. He's held the position of Scott Township Supervisor from 92 to 98, and 2010 to 2016, and then took 2018 to the present. He served on the Lackawanna County Government Study Commission from 2013 to 2014, and in the past, he was a candidate for state representative for the 114th District. He's a current member of UNICO, the Scranton Chapter, and his past civic experiences include Vice President and Solicitor for the Lackawanna County Council of Governments, member of the Board of Directors of the American Red Cross, Vice President of the Justice Volunteer Fire Company, and Secretary of the Young Lawyers Division of the American Bar Association. He is currently an in-house trial attorney, Nationwide Insurance Company Trial Division. He has served as Senior Deputy Attorney General for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, an attorney with Murphy, Piazza, and Gennello, municipal solicitor for Scott Township, judicial clerk for the Honorable Chester T. Harhut for the Lackawanna Court of Common Pleas, and as a college instructor for the University of Scranton. He was born in Clark Summit, and he and his wife Tina reside in Scott Township and are the parents of Michael and Tricia. And again, welcome to Mike Gianetta. And finally, Jerry Notariani was born and resides in Scranton. He and his wife Susan have a son, Francis, and a daughter, Laura. He's a graduate of Scranton Central High School and studied accounting at Wilkes College. He has worked in the family business, AIT Auto Parts, since 1972, and is the sole proprietor. Having been elected to several positions, including the Pennsylvania Democratic State Committee, Democratic Chairman of the 113th Legislative District, Lackawanna County Register of Wills, Chairman of both the City and County Democratic Committees, and Lackawanna County Government Study Commission, Jerry currently holds the position of Lackawanna County Commissioner. In addition, he has served on the Scranton Zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Directors for the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, for the St. Michael School for Boys, and the Act 101 Program of NEIU. He is also a member of the Columbus Day, San Cataldo, and St. Patrick's Day Associations. So with that, we've introduced all of our candidates this evening, and we'll get started with questions. The first question, we did draw dots, not straws, but dots, to see who would go first, and Jerry drew the dot. So for this one, I'd like to start first to say that Lackawanna County is $129 million business, and the county is an important engine for economic development in northeastern Pennsylvania, so we hope that throughout this evening, the candidates can bear that in mind as they're answering our questions. So the first question goes to Jerry first. What do you see as the most important function of the Lackawanna County Commissioners, and what qualities do you personally possess that will make you an effective commissioner? And you have two minutes for your response.
The most important part of Lackawanna County Government is to try to drive economic development within the county and work with all of the communities that we serve. County Government is a complex operation currently. You're responsible for many, many services, the elderly, area agents on aging, children and youth, a prison, all of it expensive, and the cost of government continues to rise. We need to be able to expand our tax base. I think it's very important that we do that. The cost of government is going to continue to rise as we get more people and services become more expensive. We have to find a way. People can't afford any more taxes. We have to find a way to begin to grow our community. We have to work closely with the Chamber, with the businesses. It's a difficult situation the county is in at this point. I think one of the important things we have to do is restore confidence in government, period, not just county government, but government in general in northeastern PA. I think regionalization is an important part of what we do. We have to work more closely with all of the areas. Actually, we spoke today with Luzerne County about combining the Transit Board and Authorities so that we can cross lines, so we can take veterans to the VA, so people can use it and make it work more efficiently and cost-effectively. It's something that's worked in other communities and other areas, and I think we have to look at those things. Again, it's a pretty interesting, complex operation, and thank you.
Thank you. Chris Chirmack, the question goes to you. What do you see as the most important function of the Lackawanna County Commissioners, and what qualities do you personally possess that will make you an effective commissioner?
I think the most important thing to me for the county commissioner is leadership and being a true leader, bring professionalism to the county. I mean, they're the hosts, they're the people that everyone looks up to, they're the ones that oversee our budget. So not only with leadership, but we need to really look at how, I mean, the commissioners are the ones that watch over our hard-earned tax dollars. They decide where the funds go, they decide how the budget is spent, and the most important thing to us is the budget and our tax dollars. So to me, those are the two things, leadership and our big budget.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie Dominic, the question goes to you. What do you see as the most important function of the Lackawanna County Commissioners, and what qualities do you personally possess that will make you an effective commissioner?
I believe the most important aspect of being a commissioner, as with any public office, is to put the residents first, to do what is best for the residents, to increase the quality of life here in Lackawanna County for our residents, to increase our tax base, to bring businesses to the area, to try to keep our students from all our surrounding colleges here in the area, and to also do all of these things while staying in a budget and keeping in mind the fact that we do live in an area where we have senior citizens or low-income families, and we want to make sure that they can live comfortably and enjoy the same things as those who are a little more fortunate without having to increase budget or cause them to endure any type of financial hardship. So as a public servant, I believe just putting the residents first is the primary duty of a commissioner. I believe that I would make a good commissioner because I advocate every day on behalf of people who cannot advocate on behalf of themselves, who cannot afford their own attorney. I also advocate for my clients in my own practice. I like to fight for the underdog, that is my thing. I want to help people, which is why I got involved in this, and that is the only reason why I got involved in this, is to help people and try to make this community a better place for all of our children and for my three-year-old son Dylan. In addition, I'm a single mom, and I stay within a budget, so I understand the importance of doing so. And like I indicated, have, the only motive that I have is to make this place a better county for all of our residents to live.
Okay, thank you. And Mike Gianetta, finally, the question goes to you. What do you see as the most important function of Lackawanna County Commissioners, and what qualities do you personally possess that will make you an effective commissioner?
I think the two most important qualities, or two most important functions of Lackawanna County is to provide essential services, social services, to members of our community. And number two, we really need to be a driving force for economic development in Lackawanna County, and we should be working more in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and with other entities that are drivers of economic development in northeastern Pennsylvania beyond the Chamber of Commerce. I think my most important quality, or what I bring to the table, is my experience. Lackawanna County Commissioner is not a position for on-the-job training. I have been involved for the past 25 years in municipal government as a township supervisor, elected three times, sewer authority member, municipal solicitor, and I've worked hand-in-hand in developing the Scott Technology Park to help drive economic development in our township and expand the tax base. I've worked with the Chamber, I've worked with SLIBCO, which is a development arm of the Chamber of Commerce, to bring tenants and employers into the park and, of course, into Lackawanna County. And I would like to see more of that being done with the county. We do have a Department of Economic Development, but they're not as active as they should be with the Chamber, and we need to expand the tax base. And the only way to do that is to work with the Chamber to bring employers in so we have better jobs here and so that our children, I have a six-year-old and a two-year-old, and hopefully, when I finish my term someday, that I will have left Lackawanna County a better place than when I first started, and my children will have a better future here in the county.
Thank you. Chris, this next question goes to you first, and we're going to dig right into a hot-button issue, and that's reassessment. State law and a basic sense of fairness requires counties to reassess real estate values. How can the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County have faith that they are paying their fair and proportionate share of taxes when assessment of property values is 50 years old? Will you support reassessment during your term in office? Why or why not?
Well, that is a big issue, and unfortunately, it has gone on way too long. Now, I know that right now that's in the courts because they wanted to try to stop the reassessment. You know, I've been around a long time talking, you know, over a couple of years I've been at this, and I've been around to all the supervisor meetings, I've talked to many residents, and people are afraid. They're afraid that if we do the reassessment, they're going to lose their homes. So you have the fear out there. I mean, there has to be fair taxes for everybody. The problem I have with the reassessment, and it's not necessarily how much you're going to pay on your property tax, it's what comes down to, it's the school tax. We are funding these schools on the backs of the taxpayers, the property owners. You know, years ago, the schools were small, the teachers did not make a lot of money, there weren't that many buses, half the kids walked to school, so things were different. Now you have multi-multi-million-dollar facilities, teachers that make well over $100,000 a year. It's just gotten so crazy that we tried, now we're trying to still continue to fund these on the backs of the taxpayers. So you know, there's been talk about Senate Bill 76, and you know, they tried to bring that around so maybe we could change the tax structure in the state. You know, this is not a county problem. It's a state problem, it's probably, it's a national problem. I think we need to look at different ways to fund the schools. That's going to ease up on the taxpayers with their fear of losing their homes, so if there is a reassessment, it's not going to bankrupt the families, so that's what I think.
Okay. Debbie, the question goes to you. Will you support reassessment during your term in office, and why or why not?
So I've had a lot of time since the debate prior to the primary election to research the issue and educate myself on this issue, so I feel as though I'm in a much better position sitting here today to make more of an informed decision or give you an informed answer. I understand that reassessment, particularly after 50 years, is needed to ensure both equality and uniformity. I'm aware of that. I'm also aware that it's necessary for economic and community development. It's an impediment for companies, they don't want to come to our area because we haven't had a reassessment in 50 years, so they're afraid to come here and sell, put in some roots. However, my position still remains the same, and that is that we have to protect our most vulnerable citizens, particularly the senior citizens. We don't want to do anything that would cause them to be forced out of their home. Same goes for low-income families. We don't want to do anything that would cause them to be forced out of their home. Now, since the debate prior to the primary election, I have studied this issue and learned that there are various protections out there. There's the homestead tax exemption, there's also the lifetime tax deferrals, which would allow a reassessment without burdening our most vulnerable citizens and providing them with some sort of protection so that in the event that a reassessment does occur, that they are protected and that we are not going to be forcing anyone out of their home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you. Would you, will you support reassessment during your term in office? Why or why not?
I'm not in favor of reassessment, and I haven't changed my position on that. Chris and I will not initiate a reassessment of the county. First, we don't have the money to do a reassessment. It will cost $10 to $15 million, and all you're basically doing is shifting around what people already pay. It's a lot of money that we don't have, we have a budget now that has a deficit of $6 million. Where does that money come from? More importantly, though, I'm very concerned that the reassessment would end up raising taxes on senior citizens with a backdoor tax increase, and we just can't have that. What was going to happen, and I believe, is that you're going to see people that built their houses or bought their houses in the '60s, '70s, and '80s for $15, $18,000, they're now worth $150, $200,000. Their taxes are going up, and they're on fixed incomes, and they cannot afford to pay more taxes. We have to protect them. Part of the problem is that with the state law, that you can not do a reassessment for 50 years, even though there's improvements being made to houses. We need the state law changed, where we have a type of rolling reassessment, that when you sell your property, and Florida does this, when you sell your property, the sale price, the fair market value price at that time becomes a new assessment number because you've already been out there, you've had appraisals done on the house, that's a good gauge of what that property is worth, and you can be doing that as the properties are changing hands. And if you're a senior citizen, you don't have to worry about that reassessment as long as you stay in your house and it's not being sold. And when you pass away, then the family will sell the house and you'll get a new assessment on the property, and you're doing it as you're going along and not waiting 40 or 50 years. Obviously, as commissioners, we can't do that, but that's something that we need the state legislature to do and change the system the way it currently exists.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you. Will you support reassessment during your term in office, and why or why not?
Yeah, I will. I stated that in the last election. It's necessary for, to be fair, a lot of it are myths, it's not true. It won't cost that much money to reassess. It's considerably less. We developed a program called Pictometry, which takes, it's a flyover, and it takes pictures of all the properties in Lackawanna County. And through that and new software within the Land Division of Lackawanna County, we are able to do a lot of it ourselves. It will not cost anywhere near $10 to $15 million. It's absolutely necessary to try to drive economic development. Companies won't come here because of our situation. It's actually over 50 years since it's been done. We are one of the last counties in the state of Pennsylvania. I think there's maybe one other one that hasn't, besides maybe two, and we are going to be forced by the courts to do it. There's no question about, there's a current lawsuit, it's something, and again, the state, and there are programs in place to protect people, and there are things that we can do and make it better, but we can't shift it to the state issue. It's a county issue. That's the way the law is written. And every other county in the Commonwealth has done it, except for, again, one or two. There are states where it's mandated every three years. We only have two companies in the state of Pennsylvania that are capable of reassessing or helping us reassess. Other states have 10 and 15 companies that combine for that, that compete for us. It's something, in order for us to expand the tax base, we absolutely have to do. And the senior citizens, it's a fallacy that their taxes are going to be raised. Many properties are not assessed at all, and that's what Pictometry will help us do. Thank you.
Debbie, this question goes to you first. So let's talk a little bit about tourism and basically economic development as well. Lackawanna County, as we all know, is situated at the crossroads of several important interstate highways, and we have a modern airport. Do you have a plan to promote business and tourism within the county? And if so, what specific steps will you take to implement the plan?
I believe that the main thing that we need to do is promote the county through marketing. I believe that, as you indicated, we have a lot of colleges, we have the medical school, we have access to all the state highways. There's a lot that Lackawanna County has to offer that our students that are in these colleges don't necessarily know of. We need to, you know, have some sort of relationship with the colleges to try to, you know, like I indicated earlier, these students that graduate, try to keep them here as opposed to them leaving. I think we need to lure businesses to our county. One way would be doing a reassessment, because in that way, they would feel more comfortable in coming here as opposed to coming to a county where reassessment hadn't occurred in 50 years. But again, as indicated earlier, I would only be agreeable to doing so as long as protections were in place for our senior citizens and other vulnerable residents. I also believe that in terms of bringing companies here, we do have a surplus currently, and I think that the county can offer incentives, tax incentives or tax reductions, as a way to lure companies and businesses to our area. And by doing so, then we would be creating a larger tax base, which then would soften the blow in terms of any type of potential tax increase to our residents. So I think we need to market better, I think we need to work with our schools, I think we need to work with our state representatives, and I think we need to come up with incentives, such as tax incentives, to try to make Lackawanna County a good place or somewhere where big companies would want to relocate.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you. Do you have a plan to promote tourism and business within the county? And if so, what specific steps will you take to implement the plan?
Well, I think initially, we need to stomp out the corruption, the nepotism, and the back-room deals that we see at the county level, the school district level, the city of Scranton, and the city of Scranton. People don't want to come here because of the bad reputation that we have due to corruption. Every time you turn around, the newspaper's being opened up. Someone's getting arrested, they're going to jail. It's a daily thing almost. We need to stop that. We need to strive for more honest government in this area. People aren't going to come here to visit when it's known to be a corrupt area. And what we do need to do is market the area. We have great facilities, we have great attractions here. When I have friends outside the area that come here, they love to go to the Lackawanna County Coal Mine. My grandfather was a coal miner. He got killed in that mine. I never met him, he died long before I was ever born. It's a fantastic facility to go down and experience what the coal miners in this area had to live with and had to deal with back in the day. The Anthracite Museum's great, the ball field is good, is great. It's a great attraction. Not many communities have a AAA franchise like we do here, and we need to market that outside the area because there are a lot of great things to see. And we have a hotel tax that's imposed primarily on people that are coming from And we have a hotel tax that's imposed primarily on people that are coming from outside the area, and they pay it. If you go to Philadelphia or Pittsburgh, you pay a hotel tax. That money should be used, and more should be used, to promote tourism and market the area outside of the Scranton, Wilkes-Barre region into Philadelphia, New York. We're only two, two and a half hours away from Philadelphia, from New York. The Poconos, there's a lot of people from Jersey and New York. They will come here if they know what we have here, and we need to do a better job marketing the attractions that we have here. And like they said in that movie, if you build it, they will come. If you advertise it, they will come.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, the question to you. Do you have a plan to promote tourism and business within the county? And if so, what specific steps will you take to implement the plan?
Well, we have a visitors bureau that is under new leadership currently, and it's been doing a great job. Their theme is put heads in beds. It's something that we need to do. It is, we are in a great situation, wherever, two hours or so from Philly, two hours or so from New York, but a lot of people in a short distance. The airport has more out-of-state people using it now than they have ever had. The airport is a huge advantage to Lackawanna County, Lackawanna and Luzerne County, and that gets you back into the regionalization of it. It's, to promote the area, isn't that difficult? We need to work together with the hospitals and the schools. We have a great healthcare system, and we need to work more carefully and closely with the early school development. The workforce development board has changed their structure so that they are going to the manufacturers and saying, what kind of training do you need us to do? You know, and that's, and there's programs in place to do that, and it's getting better and better and better. There's no question about it. And as far as the corruption, there's no question, that's an issue. But again, I don't think we, there's anyone here that isn't, has been involved in any of that, and I think that we need to go forward, and I'm very comfortable with everyone sitting at this table doing the right thing. We can, we can make this work. This is a great area and a lot of opportunity, and work together with the chamber and all the communities and go forward.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, the question now goes to you. Do you have a plan to promote tourism and business within the county? And if so, what specific steps will you take to implement the plan?
Well, I, I think we're doing a pretty good job. The visitor bureau is getting some of the message out. You know, there is a lot of things to do around here. They're increasingly adding bicycle, the bike trails throughout the county. We have Steamtown. Who has, who has a train museum in their town? I mean, there's a few, but we have a great one with the Trolley Museum. We have the Coal Mine Tour, like Mike said, the things that go on in the city with First Friday. I mean, that's a lot of fun. Montage Mountain. I'm a skier. Montage Mountain, Elk Mountain. It's out of Lackawanna County, but still, these two mountains bring a tremendous amount of people to the hotels, the restaurants, the bed and breakfast, all throughout the area in the wintertime, when there's really nothing else to do. We have a great baseball stadium. You talked about the airport. The airport, since it's been remodeled and with the, with the different flights that come in and out, I mean, it's a tremendous asset. So, promoting, promoting our area is the key thing. Marketing, I've heard that a few times. I mean, marketing, obviously, we have to market our area. We have to market ourselves. You know, it's just like running the county as a business. So, but I think we do, I think we do a pretty good job, and there's a lot to do around here.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this next question will go to you first, and let's talk, so we've talked about bringing people in and marketing it. Well, now, let's talk about the infrastructure and what that means for people when they're traveling here. The public infrastructure in Pennsylvania seems to have been neglected for years. What should Lackawanna County do to ensure that it stays current with needed maintenance and replacement projects for things that pertain to the county, that are under the responsibility of the county? Whether it's bridges, roads, the prison, county facilities, whatever it is, how does the county stay on track with needed maintenance and repairs so that things don't fall to the wayside?
What we need to do is have a top-notch county roads and bridges, public works department. Having, having served as a township supervisor, I am aware that the county's responsible for the bridges that you find on borough and township roads, and over the years, a lot of them have been damaged. A lot of them have fallen into disrepair, and our roads and bridges department repaired them. Bruce Smolikom, former commissioner, when he was on the board, actually had a crew and a team that went out and repaired them, the county, repaired the bridges by county employees. We need to do something like that. We don't own a lot of roads. We do own the stretch of Main Avenue in Dixon City, which a lot of people, and I don't live too far from there, and it's kind of like a minefield driving up in the Dixon City area, and we need to, we need to pave that. We need to maintain that. And one of the first things that I'm going to do, and I did this when I was a supervisor, I want to go out with the roads and bridges department, and I want to tour the county facilities. I want to see all of our roads, our infrastructure. I want to hear from the guys, like, what do we need? What type of improvement do we have to make? What, what resources do you need? I did that as a supervisor. I went out with the, with the road department, and I plowed snow with our road department at 1:00 in the morning to see the job and what they did. I did the same thing with the police department, riding with the police, doing traffic stops, going on domestic calls. So, me as the person in charge of the budget, I knew what their job was because I was out there with them, and I will do the same thing as a commissioner with all departments, not just the Department of Public Works, but I'll make it a priority, get out there and learn the job from the guys on the ground, at the grassroots, as to what they actually need.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you. How should the county stay current with maintenance and replacement projects for things that are part of the county's infrastructure?
Part of that, or that road that Mike is talking about in Dixon City is actually being currently under construction. Part of it, the problem, is you have to deal with state to get approvals on many of it, much of it. We had to get easements from many of the homeowners, and ultimately had to, and a lot of it was just a little bit of property from them, and most of the property owners agreed to it. But we're, that's, that's in the works. That's been happening. The bridges, Lackawanna County currently tries to do at least three a year. It's expensive, and it also comes into a state issue where you have to get environmental approval, you have to go through the process, and it's expensive. It's, it is. We do have a top-notch roads and bridge department, actually, and it is ongoing, and it's constant, and you just keep changing, you know, what's the next one? What's the most important one? What's the most damaged one? The least safe one? And it's, it's an ongoing operation. It, it is an issue, and the infrastructure is a concern, and everyone does. We're currently building a new garage for the roads and bridge department. We get state and local grants for equipment. We have bought a program called eCivics, which allows us to search the entire world for grants of a variety of topics, and that's part of how it's, it's done. And it's, it's, it's an ongoing situation, and we just got a $500,000 grant, I think, from the state to do the stop, the road at the Stoffer Industrial Park. It's, it's, it's something we, we have been working on, and it's something that needs to be worked on, you know, diligently and continually.
Thank you. And Chris, the question to you. What should Lackawanna County do to ensure that it stays current with maintenance and replacement projects for infrastructure that the county owns?
That's going to be, that's a never-ending battle. It's just like when you own your own house, you never stop. There's always something that you have to repair, you have to fix, you have to paint, you have to clean up. And it's the same for the county roads, the bridges, the buildings. I mean, it's just, it's a constant thing. Our roads here take a pounding with the weather that we have, especially in the wintertime. It's just going to be important for the commissioners that make sure that our county and road department have the stuff that they need, have the budget that they need to be able to fix these things and take care of the problems that we have. You know, it's unfortunate to me, because one of the biggest problems that we have is the Globe Store building. I mean, that has been a money pit. So, with that, every extra penny, I think, that we have is going to be going to fix the building. You know, Mike was in there the other day at the voter registration. There's plastic on the ceiling, stuff, people around. I said, what happened? Well, the sewer line broke again. It got raw sewage all over the desks. I mean, it's all, it's just going to be a never-ending battle. And the thing that irritates me about that is, I got, I was up at Hero's Day at the 911 Center. I got, Director Hahn gave, gave myself and Mike and my wife a tour of the building and the whole facility, and that place is state-of-the-art. Air purification systems, bulletproof glass, top-notch electronics. I mean, the place is awesome. Parking, it's, it's, it's very easy to get to. We could have put a building up that was state-of-the-art, that would have hopefully cost us a little bit less money, but it would have been brand-new, and we could have had a nice cushion not to have to worry about repairs and a dilapidated building.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie, the question goes to you. What should Lackawanna County do to ensure that it stays current with maintenance and replacement projects for county infrastructure?
Well, first, with regard to the Globe Store, woulda, coulda, shoulda, it's there. We have to deal with it. We can't go back in time and pretend it doesn't exist. So, we have to deal with the issues that are presented as they come. If being a commissioner was an easy job, I think everybody would try to be a commissioner. It's not an easy job. It's a hard job. So, we need to be proactive. Everybody needs to communicate. We need to communicate with our departments. We need to communicate with DPW. We need to make sure everybody's doing their job. We need to find out, try to prioritize, what are the problem areas? We have to consult the budget, make sure that what we're doing stays within budget, because everything that we do, whether it's fix a bridge, or fix a road, or make changes to the Globe Building, everything affects the budget, which is, you know, what the important, most important part of, of being a commissioner, which is staying within a budget. So, I, I believe it's just open line of communication, being proactive, and making sure that everyone, including us, are doing our jobs.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, this next question will go to you first, and this is another hot-button issue in talking about the budget and how it will impact it, and that's stormwater. So, our region, as we know, is under a mandate to treat water that eventually drains to the Chesapeake Bay. This is a regional problem that is far broader than merely the city of Scranton. How can the county take steps to solve or to better fund this regional problem? And what is your position on a rain tax or a regional authority? What's your solution for this problem?
There's, there's no known solution at this point. Luzerne County has initiated some, some programs that haven't been working very well. Regionalization is absolutely the key to it. We, we have a regionalization authority to deal and work on, on that. It's, it's, no, another federal mandate unfunded. It's, it's, it's programs that we're actually currently, hopefully, working with the state to try to solve. The states are the ones that are told that they must cut down on the nitrogen and phosphorus that flows in the Chesapeake River, and there's, there's, it's, there's no easy solution to that at this point. I don't, I think a rain tax is ridiculous. It's by your, the size of your lot, by the size of your parking lot, you're going to be taxed accordingly. It's just, just not right. The city did separate their stormwater from the sewer supposedly at this point, but again, it's something we have to do as a, as a region as opposed to an individual town or community. It's, it's just not fair, and we're, something, it's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question goes to you. What's your solution for the stormwater issue?
First of all, I'm, I'm all for helping the environment, so I don't want anybody thinking that I'm anti-environmental, but putting it, another tax on the taxpayers of Pennsylvania, especially Lackawanna County, to me, is senseless. You know, the Susquehanna River starts in Cooperstown, New York. You know, they, they can pay too. It is an unfunded mandate that's put on, that the federal government's pushing on us, and you know, that's how they solve problems. Whenever they have a problem, they throw money at it. This time, they want to throw an extra tax on, to the taxpayers of Lackawanna County. I'm not going to support it.
Okay. And Debbie, the question goes to you now. What's your solution for the stormwater problem?
I do believe that regionalization is required. I think that we cannot put the burden on individual boroughs or municipalities because they simply can't afford it. I also believe that our citizens cannot afford another tax, so I do not believe that they, that the burden should fall on our residents. I, I believe that there are things that we need to look into in order to see what we can do to eliminate the problem. There's a certain type of asphalt where water will soak into it as opposed to run, it'll soak through it as opposed to run off it. There are swales, which is the purpose, the purpose of that is to slow and control the water, so it prevents flooding of the sewer system. So, I believe that there are many avenues available for us to potentially resolve the issue, but this, it needs to be researched, and it needs to be studied, and I think we need to be, we need to think out of the box and try to come up with some answers that, that do not require any type of burden on our citizens or the boroughs individually in terms of, in terms of paying for it.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question to you. What's your solution for the stormwater problem?
I, this, this whole issue of the rain tax and stormwater management, I believe, is a solution looking for a problem. We need to worry about Lackawanna County and not the Chesapeake Bay. It's a never-ending battle with Washington and Harrisburg taxing us and taking our residents' money for a certain area for environmental purposes. If Washington feels this is that important of a problem, then Washington needs to fund it. I am totally against, and Chris is totally against, the formation of any type of county-wide wastewater regional authority. What that would do would give an unaccountable board of members on that authority to levy a tax on every property in this county, and they're not answerable to the people, they're not answerable through elections. They can basically do what they want, and that would be the vehicle for unlimited taxation on residents in this county, and we cannot have ever the creation of a regional wastewater authority or a storm, a storm management authority. And I've, I've gone through this in Scott Township, where we put, we had to put sewers in in areas of the township, and it was fought for 20 years because of pollution and raw sewage and mandates to cut back on phosphorus and nitrogen, and it was a huge, huge expense to people, and that people couldn't afford it. We were lucky to get a lot of grants towards the project, but they, people are tapped out. We cannot stick our hands in their pocket any further, and this, this is something to create another pool of money for non-elected officials to be spending, and I'm not in favor of a rain tax, stormwater management. We just have to say no, and we have to tell Washington no, and we need to work with our federal elected officials to put an end to this.
Okay, thank you. Chris, this next question will go to you first, and I want to talk about the prison, and I'll share that this question comes to us from the Scranton Area Ministerium. The criminal justice system is a major item in the, in the county budget, and the Lackawanna County prison plays a large part in the budget. Yet, there still seem to be ongoing concerns with things that are happening at the, at the prison. Would you support reinstating a full-time trained chaplain at the prison in order to help address ongoing concerns?
I've sat with the advocacy group multiple times and listened to, you know, there's, there's three sides to every story. So, I've heard the prison side. I've heard the advocacy group side, and I'm sure there's another side. But as far as a chaplain, I'd be all for that. Anything like that is certainly going to help the prisoners with getting back to, getting reform and getting back to an honest, hard-working, get them back into society, and that's, that's it. I would certainly be okay with that. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, the question goes to you. Would you support reinstating a full-time trained chaplain at the prison to help address concerns?
I'm unnecessarily... I would necessarily be against it, but there are so many other issues that need to be addressed prior to that. There's a very large quantity of inmates with drug and alcohol and/or mental health illness, yet we have a psychiatrist on duty who works six to nine hours a week. That's a problem. I think we need to, you know, it's great to think that we're going to have a chaplain there who's going to somehow give words of wisdom, and then our prisoners are going to leave there and become productive members of society, but unfortunately, the majority, the vast majority of our inmates have drug and alcohol issues, and they're receiving zero treatment while they're in there. Sorry, they get one drug and alcohol class, I think, every four to six weeks. Aside from that, they receive no treatment. Additionally, the mental health treatment is basically nonexistent and completely insufficient. So, what we need to do in order to address the prison problem is, number one, in terms of any type of the recent lawsuits, assaults here and there, whatever that issue may be, corruption within the prison, there has to be a zero tolerance policy, excuse me. And there also has to be, whenever there's an incident, an external investigation, not an internal, because that's the only way that you're going to have a real independent investigation of something that is reported. And with regard to the prison itself, in terms of what we need to do to help the prisoners and the inmates that are in there, what we need to do is, number one, stop incarcerating them. We have the...we're the second highest incarceration rate per capita in Pennsylvania, second only to Philadelphia. We keep incarcerating people, we're not rehabbing them, we're not treating them, they're getting out, they're in the same condition or the worst condition that they were in, and it just keeps going a vicious circle. It's recidivism. So, if you want to try to fix the prison system, you need to start addressing the inmates that are in the prison system.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you. Would you support reinstating a full-time trained chaplain to help address concerns?
Well, I suppose it has to do whether or not the full-time chaplain is going to be paid for by the taxpayers of the county, or if it's a volunteer position. If it's a volunteer position, I would be open to it, but we certainly cannot afford to create more positions and jobs that are a burden on the taxpayers. You know, since the May primary, we have filled, well, not we have, but the county has filled 15 to 20 jobs. They're creating more jobs for people. Tomorrow at the Salary Board, they're creating two new positions. We have a $6 million deficit. We shouldn't be creating more positions and more jobs. We need to cut back and stop spending so much money. I believe that the problem at the prison has a lot to do with the people that get hired, and that's the place where political patronage is occurring right now. Everyone's cousin or relative, they get a job at the prison. We need to be looking at who is being hired at the prison, and we don't need to be spending more money on prisoners, we need to be spending more money on the facilities. And really, this goes back to your philosophical view of prisons. Are prisons there to punish people, or are they there to coddle them and take care of them and try to rehabilitate them? And, you know, you have people on both sides, but we have to remember, we don't want these people on the street. We don't want defense attorneys going out and requesting bail for drug dealers to go back out on the...go back on the street. We need to keep them there, so they're not selling drugs to our children and creating a bigger problem in the community. We need to be tough on drug abuse, we need to be tough on drug dealers, and we need to keep them there and not put them back out on the streets.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you. Would you support reinstating a full-time trained chaplain at the prison to help address concerns?
I think that's a concern that could be addressed, and I think it could be done through a canteen fund that is from the profits of the inmates' purchases during the course of the year, as long as it's used to help them. So, really, you could conceivably do it without costing any money to the taxpayers. I agree with the comments about the hires at the prison. I don't agree with creating new positions. I have not hired any guards, I've not signed for any guards in recent memory at all. It happens. I do not have a friend or a relative, you know, that I've hired. It's a...and again, you get back to the...they're in jail, they don't get treated, they're back in jail. $65 a day, it's expensive. It's an expensive thing, it's something we're mandated to do, to have one, and there are some programs, but a lot of the problems that we're having at the prison still are from prior administrations and prior years, and it's not controlled totally by the Lackawanna County Commissioners. It's controlled by a prison board that consists of the three commissioners, the district attorney, the sheriff, and the controller. So, it's a little bit more involved than just three commissioners. You can support certain things and still not end up winning that argument when the prison board decides they're going to do something differently. I think that's important, and I think it's important that we do deal with the drug and alcohol and mental health issues, most importantly.
Okay. Debbie, you want to use a rebuttal?
Yes, I would. To say incarcerate, 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 that is coming from somebody who clearly has never worked in the criminal justice system. I represent many people who are accused of drug-related crimes to support their own habits. They are human beings. To stick them in a prison at $65 a day, which costs taxpayers money to keep them there, and then say that, you know, we need to stop spending money to try to help these people, it's counterproductive. If you want to not pay $65 a day to keep these inmates that are primarily drug addicts and alcoholics in the prison, then get them some treatment so that when they leave, you're not paying $65 a day, and you're not going to pay $65 a day when they end up back there, which is recidivism. The other thing is, not everything costs money. I've had numerous conversations with people from rehab places, and I have rehabilitation specialists who have said that they are willing to go to the prison for free and give group sessions and individual sessions and AA. They're human beings, it's an illness, and they need to be treated like that.
Okay, thank you. The next question, Debbie, it goes to you first, and let's move on and talk about the county pension plan. So, what is the financial health of county pensions, and is it time to consider any fundamental changes to the type of plan or towards funding? Let us know how you feel about that.
My knowledge of the county...I mean, Jerry is the current sitting commissioner, so he would be best suited, I believe, to answer this question. However, my answer is this, that we're never going to put our retirees at risk. We have to make sure that we take our obligation to protect our county retirees and their pensions very seriously. We hire experts who give us advice on how to fund a pension, and the reason why we hire those experts is because we are not experts in those fields, but they are. And it's my understanding that Lackawanna County also has experts to watch our experts. So, we have people in place that are financial service companies, such as, you know, PNC Bank or whatever it may be, and they have a fiduciary obligation to us, and we have to ensure that they do follow the mandates and do what's best for our retirees, and if they don't, then they're liable to us. But we have a second safety measure in place, which is, we have another company, and I'm sure Jerry could speak more to this, we have another company who is actually watching what our experts are doing with our pension fund. So, again, I think that it's not a very easy question to answer because the market fluctuates. Again, you have to stay within a budget, and again, there's a lot more to it in terms of actuarially soundness and other things that go into it that, again, commissioners, or at least I myself, am not qualified to answer. That's why we have experts who do it for us.
Okay, thank you. Mike, the question goes to you. What's the status of the county's pension funds, and should any significant changes be made?
Well, I think the current status of the pension fund is that it's only 85% funded, and the actuaries that look at the fund and determine how much money we need to project out, that we'll have money there for when people retire, they set the amount of money that should be in there, and we're only 85%. So, that is a red flag, and over the past several years, the county has not made any contributions to the pension fund. That's a very serious issue. Even if the market is doing well, the county should still be putting in money into the pension fund, because when the market goes down, the fund's going to lose money. So, we need to keep putting money in. And if we weren't wasting so much money on having emails reviewed by a law firm in the city for $400 an hour at over $1 million, we could have that money to put into the pension fund. And the money going into the Globe Store, the black hole of the Globe Store, that's money that could be going into the pension fund. There are two types of pensions. There is a defined benefit plan and a defined contribution plan, and the county has a defined benefit plan, which means you get a percentage of your pay at retirement for the rest of your life, and that's opposed to the 401K defined contribution plan, and you get what is in it when you retire as it grows in the market. We made a commitment to the employees of this county that there would be money there when they retire, and we currently have a defined benefit pension plan, and we need to meet that requirement. We have a responsibility to the employees, they paid into it, and we need to fund that pension.
Okay. Jerry, the question goes to you. What's the health of this county's pension plan, and should changes be made?
Actually, I want to thank Mike for promoting what I've been promoting for the last three and a half years. We are not 85% funded. We are currently getting down to around 70% funded. It has been an issue. I voted against the last three budgets or two budgets because they did not fund it properly. This past year, they decided to contribute $500,000 or $600,000, I believe. In reality, it should be somewhere around, in the situation it's in now, somewhere around $3 million. It's not having your pension funded properly creates more problems than just not paying county employees. It creates problems with bond issues, it creates problems with borrowing power, it creates a whole bunch of power problems, and they chose to ignore it. They talk about a surplus, well, that's fine, but they're spending it as far as the Globe Store was concerned. I was totally against the Globe Store. It is a money pit. They're going to continue to say it isn't. It certainly is. There's a better way of doing it, and that's where pension money...no matter what, the pension has to be funded better. And again, it's something I've been promoting since day one.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, the question goes to you about the health of the county's pension fund, and should changes be made?
Well, I've heard all these, all the numbers, and I've heard all the excuses, and the fact is, it hasn't been funded in the past few years. Now, we do owe it to the retirees and to the people that plan on retiring, that that has funds in it. The excuse that I heard recently was that, well, the market's doing very well, so we're making very good money on our investments, so we really don't need to fund it. Well, I mean, I just look at what I would do for my own retirement stuff and my 401Ks. When the market's doing well, I'm not going to say, well, I'm not going to put any money in it. I'm going to put money in it. Of course, you're going to put money in it if the stock market's doing well. So, that's a poor excuse. It's got to be budgeted, it's got to be funded every single year. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this question will go to you first, and let's talk about the environment and basically the carbon footprint of government. Counties are leading, and many have adopted energy-efficient plans to make measurable reductions in their carbon footprint while saving tax dollars through reducing electricity and fuel expenses. What is your plan for a low-carbon future for Lackawanna County?
Well, part of our plan should be switching over to LED lighting, which uses a lot less energy than the traditional light bulbs that everyone's used to. There are companies that are out in the community that do come in. I know in Scott Township, we had several come in to give us a proposal and projected out what type of savings we would have, and we should be looking at that. And, you know, one of the other things that we should probably be looking at is really taking advantage of the natural gas that we have in this area. We should be looking at, you know, natural gas-fueled vehicles. I believe that the Colts buses use some natural gas. We should be using that more. We should be using it wherever possible to fuel our county buildings, because the carbon output of natural gas is far less than the traditional oil or coal. We used to have steam here at one time, and then, of course, we had coal, but we have a huge resource here in our community with the natural gas, and we should be partnering with the natural gas companies to utilize that gas, and instead of, you know, sending it overseas, we should be using it here in Lackawanna County to help fuel our vehicles and our buildings, and, you know, we should be meeting with outfits like, you know, Cabot and other gas industry leaders to give us some of their opinions on what we could switch over and save money, and then also reduce our carbon input, our output in Lackawanna County.
Okay, thank you. And Jerry, the question to you. What's your plan for a low-carbon future for Lackawanna County?
Well, Colts currently has a compressed natural gas fueling station there, and they were awarded a federal grant to fund putting a new system in that will be able to be used for not just the Colts buses, but for they can actually kind of retail it to trucking companies. It's a...that's...natural gas is currently the answer. There's no question about it, and it's something that we can go forward with and work, and work with the companies, Cabot or whoever, and do that. As far as the lighting is concerned, that, most of that's been done throughout the county buildings, in the airport. It's something that...we have a, I believe, a consultant that works with them. It's not someone that I know, but it's someone that has been working on that, and it's something just to go forward with. But it's something that we...again, natural gas does seem to be the solution for, at least a big part of the solution for us.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question goes to you. What is your plan for a low-carbon future for Lackawanna County?
Well, the natural gas is the key thing, and the continued use of the natural gas. I mean, we're sitting on huge amounts of reserves. More county vehicles, we could add to that list besides buses. I mean, there are a lot of county cars, we can maybe get into that. We have the generation plant in Jessup. You know, that's a good start. You know, maybe we need to look at promoting more natural gas power plants in the area. So, I think that's the key thing for the carbon footprint in my book.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie, the question goes to you. What's your plan for a low-carbon future for Lackawanna County?
It's my understanding that one thing that is being done is Lackawanna County and Luzerne County, they're trying to consolidate so that there are fewer buses on the road, and I believe that that is a good starting point. I believe that all buses, even though we have some buses that have converted to natural gas, all buses should be converted to natural gas. And I also believe that we need to also explore other areas such as sustainable energy, wind, solar, thermal, wind turbines for electricity. I think the Scranton School District has a wind turbine that it uses for some form of electricity. So, I believe that while natural gas is, you know, the easy answer, we should be exploring other areas, like I indicated, wind, solar, thermal, and other areas to generate electricity to reduce our carbon footprint.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, this next question will go to you first. So, let's talk about checks and balances within the county. And I raised the issue simply because of what's gone on in Scranton recently that is in the newspaper, that Scranton did not have adequate checks and balances in place to control and audit the use of city vehicles and charge accounts. So, do you believe that adequate auditing and safeguards exist now for the use of county vehicles and county gasoline credit cards? And if not, what will you do to improve the checks and balances that exist within the county?
Our county controller, a separate elected official, is the one that basically is responsible for keeping an eye on that and making sure the bills are the ones that are current, but it gets into the Finance Department, and I think they do do a fine job, and I think it's something that we can certainly work on and make better. I think there's some employees that are...may take advantage of the situation at this point, and I think that comes back down to the... point, and I think that comes back down to the politics of it, and it's wrong. And we need to change that and work harder to try to get that resolved. But again, until you remove some of the politics from it, it's difficult. But I think it's not as, it's certainly not as bad as the city or the school district is. But does that have room for improvement? Sure it does.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question goes to you. Are there adequate checks and balances in the county? And if not, what would you do to improve them?
Well, I'm not a commissioner, so I don't know if there's adequate checks and balances. I would hope the comptroller has a good feel for that, you know, he's, or that person is going to be one of the people that we sit with and go over how things are handled. You know, the county has to be run like a business. And in a business, if multiple people have credit cards for, and company cars, and they're fueling their vehicles and going on vacation, I mean, you have to watch this stuff. So, it's going to be up to the comptroller and his team to make sure things are done. So, as a commissioner, we're going to have to meet with these people and make sure they have a handle on that stuff. That's definitely a priority.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie, the question goes to you. Are there adequate checks and balances? And if not, what would you do to improve them?
I don't have, I'm not privy, and I don't have intimate knowledge of whether or not there are checks and balances. Obviously, if these types of issues are arising, something is wrong. The fact that there are problems doesn't mean that there's not, that there aren't adequate checks and balances, maybe it's just not being executed properly. So, I believe that you have to be proactive, you have to, you know, follow up and monitor the departments, not to the point of micromanaging, but it's a big county, and sometimes things get lost in the shuffle. And I believe us as commissioners, we need to make sure that good people, qualified people are doing their jobs and doing it correctly and not taking advantage of the system.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you. Are there adequate checks and balances? And if not, how could they be improved?
Well, I think initially that the county has to have a very strict, detailed policy on the use of county-owned vehicles. I don't believe that they have any right now, but we should have a policy, and it should be strictly enforced. And my view is that we should have as few county vehicles that employees are using as possible. If there is, if there is a policy there, it needs to be strengthened so we don't have a situation like what we saw in Scranton. Employees should not be using vehicles for personal use. You would think that that would be common sense, but some employees just don't have it. They want to use those vehicles for their own personal use. And we saw the situation in Scranton where the, you know, the fire chief took the vehicle on vacation at the Jersey Shore. I mean, you really, you shouldn't have to have a policy. It should be common sense, you don't use a vehicle for something like that. That's personal use for the family. And, you know, if we had a strict policy like that in the county, and I found anybody doing something like that, they'd be fired. I would not tolerate something like that, and I don't think the taxpayers would allow something like that to go on. You know, again, we need to do a review of all the vehicles that we do have. Who uses them? When they can use them? And then we need to have some strict guidelines on when they can and can't use them, and if there's violations, the people should be terminated.
Okay, thank you. Chris, this next question will go to you first, and I want to talk about the election system within the counties. The county is responsible for the election system that all of us go to vote on. And anybody who watches the national news for 20 seconds knows that there are certainly concerns about the election system and manipulating that. So, and there's been a lot in the newspaper about the need to replace voting machines with a, and I know that we have an auditable paper trail. It's what we've been using Lackawanna County for a long time, but my understanding is that those machines are going to be decertified or whatever it is. So, what's the plan for the county to make sure that we have machines that are voter, that are verifiable, and that they are certified as tamper-proof? What can we do to make sure that our system is adequate?
Well, I would think that there's some new equipment out there, newer equipment, state-of-the-art I don't know. I don't think the stuff that we have now, I mean, the stuff's all getting old. I know that the county did look at purchasing new things, you know, but again, that, again, that affects the budget. The stuff costs a fortune. So, there's going to have to be a way that can be put into the budget so that we can afford to buy a new state-of-the-art voting machines, stuff that can't be tampered with. And it's not going to be just a county problem, it's going to be a nationwide problem. So, I don't have the solution to it, but I'm sure there's going to be a lot of good ideas coming forward.
Okay, thank you. And Debbie, the question goes to you. Obviously, the county's responsible for the voting system within the county. What do we do to make sure that it's secure and tamper-proof?
Well, I mean, I don't know really what type of devices are out there, or what type of voting machines are out there. I mean, I think we need to do research and see what's available, what's most cost-efficient, what has the lowest probability of being able to be tampered with. I think we probably would have to put together a team, not saying that we have to hire new people, but maybe team of already county employees, put together a team together to try to determine, you know, what the best course of action is in terms of what we're going to be purchasing, whether or not the items that we're going to be purchasing are going to actually do what we, have the intended purpose of decreasing the possibility of tampering, and also make sure that they're budget-friendly. So, I don't think there's an easy answer. I think it has to be researched and looked into, and, you know, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you. As the county's responsible for the voting system, what do we do?
I have to say that probably one of the best-run departments that we have in Lackawanna County is the Office of Voter Registration, run by Marion Medallis. I mean, since I was a kid running for township supervisor, I've been in there numerous times. I remember a lot of people there, Bobby Weston and Marion, and they really have a top-notch staff. They do a great job. And we know we have these paper ballots. I don't think we need to replace them. We have a verifiable piece of paper, we can go back and count the ballots, but I've asked, I've talked to Marion about it, and she said, yes, we do. You can't tamper with them, but the system is old, and the software is going to expire, and they probably do need to be upgraded. But I don't think we have to worry about anybody tampering with the results. We're not on the internet, nobody can get in there and change votes or vote counts. But if there's an issue with software, then, you know, perhaps they do have to be upgraded. And as an update on this, I was just reading the other day that I think there's a new proposal by Governor Wolf in the legislature, and they're looking at putting an agreement together for funding the purchase of these, of new machines for counties with some type of election reform and absentee ballot voting. And I think that we had a December 31st deadline to purchase new machines, but I think we should need to wait and see what happens with the legislature and what type of funding comes out of negotiations with the legislature and the governor, and maybe there will be substantial funding so we can purchase and upgrade our voting system here in the county.
Okay, thank you. And Jerry, the question goes to you. What should we do?
Well, the problem is that we're required to change it by 2020. It has to be changed by then. The state first had to certify what machines would be usable. We have a paper trail, but it's not what they consider to be certifiable, so we have no option. There are about, so far, I think there's five different companies that have had their machines certified by the state of Pennsylvania. We've had them in to put demonstrations on. The people that sat through the meetings were our CFO, Marion Medallis, and some people from voter registration, and a couple people from IT and myself. And it's something that there's no option. There is some money available for the state. I think it's about 65% so far. If we do it prior to the first of the year, we get some federal money for it too. It's something we absolutely don't have an option to do. We're going to have to do it. The CFO says we can conceivably, you know, there's not an issue that we can't pay for it. One of the problems is it's got to be friendly to the people that do the pole workers. They have to be able to move the machines and turn them on. Well, it's not as simple as it sounds in all the situations. I mean, some, and they have to be handicap-accessible machines. It was pretty complex and pretty interesting, but I think Lackawanna County is really going in the right direction on that right now, and Marion and Tom Durk and our CFO have come to what they feel is the best one, and it's now coming to the, it'll come before the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. I think I can squeeze in one last question before we go to closing statements, but I'm going to ask for one minute on this instead of two. And Debbie, the question will go to you first. So, realistically, what is the top accomplishment that you want to achieve if you're elected? And I'll remind you that when you answer this question, as I've reminded the other candidates in this season, this will be available on YouTube forever. How will voters measure your success? So, what do you hope to achieve? What's your top achievement, and how will voters measure your success?
I have many passions, but my, the passion that brought me on this journey is to fight the opioid addiction issue in the county, which also ties into mental health issues. I have a young son, he's three years old. People are dying at an alarming rate. It's not an epidemic, it's turning into a pandemic. It's non-discriminatory. Addiction affects everybody, low income, middle income, the rich, black, white, in your twenties and your thirties. My primary goal is to try to get that under control so our citizens stop dying, and so that when we send our children to school, we know that they're going to come home safely.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question to you. What do you realistically hope to achieve as your top achievement, and how will voters measure your success?
My top, Chris and I, our top priority is to return transparency and openness to the operation of county government, which we don't have right now. One thing that we need to change is the secretive hiring process, which I have complained about for a long time. We need to advertise jobs. When there are openings, they need to be posted and advertised so that everybody has an opportunity to apply. We need to do background checks on people, we need to make sure that they have paid their taxes, and we need to hire people at public meetings. It's currently being done behind closed doors. We also need to advertise and post all openings on boards and commissions and authorities so that anybody that's interested can submit their name and serve. There's a lot of good people out there, but they don't apply because they don't know that there's a vacancy. And so, openness and transparency in the operation of meetings and the job application process, top priority for Chris and I.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you. If you're re-elected, what do you hope to accomplish in this term, and how would voters hold you accountable?
Well, a couple of things. You know, the economic developments, and we can continue to do a great job with area agency on aging and our children and youth programs. As far as the transparency is concerned, if you know any reporter or TV personality that covers us, I answer my phone. I answer their questions. I agree with that. When they put it right to know, and I think they should get it immediately if possible, and there's times when it's not possible, but it may take a few days, but they'll tell you. It's difficult. They have to go through a waiting process. Again, if you know any reporter, I agree with that. I agree with the hiring process to make that more open. It's wrong, and it's got to be changed. I think that's something that we can do as whoever ends up being elected. It's a matter of getting people's confidence in government back.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, finally, the question goes to you. What's your top hope for accomplishment, and how would the voters hold you accountable?
Well, I heard a lot of good things. Everybody has to remember, up at this podium or this stage right now are the next three commissioners, and the three people that are going to lead this county for the next four years. So, we want people that are going to, you know, run this county very professionally, very efficiently, hopefully, very honestly, do all the things that everyone's talking about. We want to make sure that we promote business to this area, and we bring jobs here to this We need three commissioners that are going to protect our tax dollars. That's important. And I'm going to use a little slogan, I'm sure some people have heard it around here, and I think it's appropriate. Choose carefully.
Thank you. Sadly, that concludes the time that we have for questions this evening. Before we move to closing statements, I'd like to first thank the candidates for all participating this evening. I'd like to thank the University of Scranton for once again supporting the League of Women Voters and all that we do here by providing us with facilities, and also ECTV for being here to record it so that it could be made available on YouTube and on ECTV. I would ask that all of you here, if you appreciate this kind of work that we as volunteers do, consider making a contribution on your way out the door, which helps us cover costs so that we can do this instead of fundraising. And believe me, we much prefer doing this to doing fundraising. So, your dollars on the way out are definitely appreciated. With that, I'd like to turn to our candidates once again for their closing statements. And we did draw a dot to see who would give the first closing statement, and that goes to Jerry Notteriani. So, Jerry, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity. I was opposed to the Globe Store. I thought it was a white elephant. I think it'll be a project that whoever's elected commissioner is going to have to deal with for a long time to come. There's no parking, there's all kinds of issues. That could take a half hour to talk about that. The rain tax is something, the problem with not trying to do something, we can have a rain tax, there's no question about it. But then, if the federal, but it's a state issue and a federal issue, and we have to work with them towards that. And I think that's, it's important that whoever the commissioners are have a good working relationship with the state and federal elected officials. And as far as the county vehicles are concerned, they do have a program in place, and they do pay attention to it. Could there be a hole in the system somewhere? Yeah, there could be. But the only ones that actually have access to a car on a regular basis are children and youth, because they're called out at all hours of the night to go and help people that have situations in the sheriff's department. Other than that, though, that no one actually has access to take a car somewhere. You have to go to the purchasing department, get a set of keys, get a gas card, and return it promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry Notteriani. Chris Chirmac, you've got two minutes for your closing statement.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. Thank you to my wife for supporting me throughout this crazy journey, and my family. Thank you to the University of Scranton for allowing us to be here tonight, and thank you everybody for attending. You know, my decision to run for county commissioner basically came from a lot of the values I learned throughout my life. I want a better life for my family here and for all the families of Lackawanna County. You know, I'm not a politician. I guess I'm going to be, possibly. But, you know, I grew up in our family business. I've been part of the local community all my life, 56 years. You know, I'm a lifelong resident of Lackawanna County. I started as a kid working in our shop, picking up tools, cleaning, doing whatever. You know, and I grew up, I started working on cars, I started doing auto body repair, I ran the collision center, then I was the general manager of the dealership. I've been a 40, first responder for 40 years. I've been a longtime member of the Clarkson Fire Company. I've been on the Elk Mountain Ski Patrol for 23 years. I've worked at the Steamed Town Marathon for 23 years. I even do security, like they said early this, tonight, I do security at the Church Bazaar. I did that for 25, I'm doing it for 25 years. You know, I started this journey for county commissioner a little over two years ago because I was frustrated with the dysfunction of county government. And I've traveled all throughout the county, I've talked to many of the citizens, they're just as frustrated as I am. You know, Mike and I are going to be, bring a professional and a common sense approach to county government, and I think it's about time. And all I can say is, we get two votes November 5th. I would hope there'd be one for me, Chris Chirmac, and one for Mike Janetta. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1796.48][1796.48] Debbie Dominic, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
I am a political novice. I like to say that I'm not a politician, I'm an attorney running for public office. I am educated, I'm motivated, and I have a passion for helping people, which is why I got involved in this in the first place. I have a successful business. I absolutely love my job at the Public Defender's Office. It's the most, the best job that I've ever had. We are overworked, underpaid, but it is so satisfying. And it's for that reason and that reason alone that I have committed to this process, which is not always an easy process. I want to make the county better for my child and for the residents of Lackawanna County and for your children. When you have a baby, your whole life and your whole perspective changes. And when I had Dylan, I realized that there are so many things that need to be improved here. I already touched upon one, which was the opioid epidemic. I just want to make it a safe and happy environment for him to grow up so that he has a good childhood like I did. I believe it's a great place to live. I just believe that there's, you know, there needs to be some improvements. Jerry and I are a very good complement to each other because I have seen and continue to see the cracks from the outside, whereas he has consistently seen the cracks from the inside. He can offer the knowledge of being a four-year commissioner and over almost four decades in public service, and I can offer him the knowledge that I have gained as an attorney of almost 20 years and as somebody who has been in the trenches and sees what needs to be fixing. So I believe that Jerry and Notariani and I will be the majority commissioners, and I believe that we can and will do the best job for this county. Thank you.
And Mike Janetta, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League, I'd like to thank the University of Scranton for sponsoring tonight's debate. Lackawanna County is at a crossroads. Two weeks from tonight, the voters are going to decide if we stay the course and continue the culture of corruption, nepotism, and backroom deals and decisions. Or they're going to demand an end to business as usual in our county. And the only team for commissioners that will bring real change to Lackawanna County is Mike Janetta and Chris Schirmack. We are two outsiders with experience who have no connection to the county. We're not employed by the county, we don't work in the county. We need people from the outside to come in and clean things up. Chris and I are the two guys to do it. Chris comes from the private sector. His family business has been up at Clark Summit for years. He volunteers for the fire department, first responder, Elk Mountain. My experience is in the legal sector as a deputy attorney general, as a municipal solicitor, as an elected township supervisor, working in municipal government for 25 years, where I've drafted budgets and hired employees and negotiated contracts with them. These are all things that a commissioner has to do. It's great experience. I do not need any training becoming commissioner. And Chris and I are the team to make the changes that we need. And let me be clear, there will be no real change in this county unless Chris and I are both elected. And we need new blood with experience, and that's Chris and I. And, you know, I have two small children who are six and two. And I would hope that when I leave my term of office someday, that I'll leave Lackawanna County a better place than it is today for them. And there is no reason why we cannot have honest government for a change. And the choice is yours to make two weeks from tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for joining us here this evening, especially if you live in the city of Scranton. Please do check the schedule for ECTV and on the League's YouTube site for Scranton mayoral debate, city council for the ballot question that's in Scranton, interviews with Scranton school directors, and also Lackawanna County comptroller. Thank you so much. Don't forget to vote on November 5th.